So what we're going to do is we're going to talk through here today, a couple of things. I've got John Weber, who's the president of Carved, coming up, as well as Angela Say, Oaklandish, who some of your locals may recognize, Dale Majors, and Drew Pearson. So really, some four amazing stories of folks that have really built an incredible business, each with their own unique stories to tell about how they've built their business on Magento. And they're going to cover a few things, just to give you a sense of what things they're going to walk through today. One is, how did they get started? How did they think about what businesses to start and what they wanted to launch? What were some of the key technology choices they made, as we're probably all interested in hearing about? And what were some of the ups and downs and turning points of those businesses as they launched them and got them going? I've never heard of a startup that successfully got up and running and never had any issues along the way. I think that's, it's one of the hallmarks of being a startup and being a startup founder. And then finally, through all of that, what did they actually learn? What were some of the things that, this is the key points of wisdom, that they can impart on us as they tell us about their journeys and share some of life's lessons that they learned as they got started? So our plan here is for each one of these folks to come up and talk a little bit about their business, and we'll sit back and listen to them as they kind of walk up here. So I'm going to first start off with John. John has a really, really interesting business. If you, you know, a lot of us know about iPhone cases and the world of millions of them out there, but John's actually carved out a business, no pun intended, in a world where there's a lot of commodity products, but he's really invented something and come up with something that's really unique and cool. He started three e-commerce companies before and consulted to many more. And so he's going to talk a little bit about Carved, his business, and how it's become one of the best-known wood phone, if you guys haven't heard of that before, but wood phoned iPhone cases and he'll, or phone cases in general, and he'll talk a little bit more about that today. So welcome, John.
These people right here in this picture are a few of my key team members. A big, huge part of our success since then has absolutely been our team. And so this is being recorded, so if they ever are watching it, you guys are absolutely amazing. Thank you very much. But what we do is we design, make, and sell wood phone cases. The way we got started was actually pretty simple. I wanted a wood iPhone case, and I didn't really like what was out there. And so I said, "Well, I'm going to make my own." And then we made one we really liked and decided we'd start selling them, and I just kind of haven't looked back since. When I started, there were about three other companies doing what we were doing. And so we weren't quite the first, but we were in there very early, and now it's become an extremely competitive marketplace, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We started out on Magento. I've been involved in e-commerce since I was 15. Actually, started all the way back on something called Agora Cart, and then moved into OS Commerce, and then Magento. So when I started Carved, I had a lot of e-commerce experience behind me and knew that we wanted to start on this platform. We started on Magento Community. We've always been on Magento Community. We love that it's open source. The community is incredible, and then obviously all the extensions that are out there, and the ease with which we can kind of build on top of it. July 2011 was day zero for us, and then December 2011, we got our first order. This product here is what she ordered. This we call an iPhone skin. It's essentially a cherry veneer that we laser cut and then laser engraved, and then it's got a removable adhesive on the back of it. So this was our very first product we started out with. That was actually our very first design we ever started out with, and our very first order on December 2011. The big gap there in time, in July, we said, "All right, we're going to make wood iPhone cases. We're going to sell them on the internet, so what do we need to make them with?" And so we bought a couple of machines and rented a warehouse, had them dropped off, and that was in July. And we said, "All right, how do we run these machines?" And it took us that period of time to kind of figure out the machinery, figure out a process, develop our website, develop the ordering and production and shipping and everything to the point where we were ready to launch to the world. Since then, between 2012 and 2015, we experienced a really strong growth rate. We had a product that people were really interested in. We had a product they loved. We sold a lot of custom products. And then the nature of our product, obviously, was very personal. So someone would design a custom case, they'd have it on their phone, and then everyone would see it. And so they'd say, "Hey, where'd you get that?" And they would then tell our story as a customer. So the big things that have been the foundation for us over the years is, like I said, we've got a unique product. So it's something that people are looking for. If you are looking for a wood iPhone case, you're going to find us. We've got a lot of our own designs. We're creating a lot of new stuff constantly. So here's a bunch of pictures of products and designs and a lot of stuff we've done over the years. So we've been bootstrapped since the beginning, which has given us a lot of flexibility and a lot of creativity. You know, we haven't had people telling us where they wanted us to go, or telling us how much money they want us to make, and so we were able to kind of drive a lot of our own direction. And then also, from the beginning, we had a multi-talented team. So we had a lot of people that were very good at a lot of different things. And so the same guy that would make the product in the beginning was the same guy that was answering the phone, was the same guy that was shipping. As we grew, we kind of hired on more and more specialists, but early on, a lot of our success came from people that could do a lot of different things during the day and do them really well. So we've got a very global reach now. This year so far in 2016, and I pulled this up about a week or two ago when I was building this, we've shipped product to 84 different countries around the world. Since we started in 2011, it's something like 150 different countries. And roughly 60% of our business is in the US, so 40% of it's international. A lot of Canada, Europe, and Australia. Obviously, we've done a lot of European countries. We've done a lot of work for big and small companies. So we never actively went out after these accounts. They would kind of look for what we were doing, or they would have an employee that had our case and would hear about us, and it would shoot us an email and say, "Hey, could you do this for us, or can we work with you this way?" So we've been in the AT&amp;T store. We've been in Urban Outfitters stores. We've done work with some really cool bands, like Manchester Orchestra and Berlin. We've made cases for them. We've made like custom wood dog tags. We've been sold in Whole Foods. We're doing, really soon, I think in about a month, we'll actually have some cases in Pixar's retail store. And we did a project for them last year for the team that worked on the new Finding Dory movie. So we made a custom printed wood case for the whole development team. They handed them all out as gifts. Everyone loved them, and so then they decided to sell them in the retail store. We've also done work for Levi's and GE and a couple of other bands there as well, and a couple of retail stores. So it's been a very exciting time because these people will come to us and they'll either, it's not all just wood phone cases. Some of it's just kind of custom engraved wood products. But they kind of come to us with a crazy idea, and then we get the chance to pull together and make it for them. So in terms of challenges, some of the challenges we face, growing profitably. And so not just growing, but making sure that as we're adding sales, we're adding sales that are making us more money. You know, if we're growing and then each sale has diminishing return, then eventually we want to stop growing, and that's not a good thing to be doing. So making sure that our development process, our manufacturing process makes sense and is really scalable. Building the right team is always a challenge. It's a difficulty for us specifically. We're based in northern Indiana, and so there's a strong manufacturing base in northern Indiana, but not a strong technology base. And so it's a challenge for us to build the right team of developers who know what they're doing. My brother, who's sitting over here, is a key developer for us. He's been with me for quite a few years and has been absolutely a big part of our team getting it done. It's good work, Dave. So on Amazon, there's 1.4 million results for wood iPhone case. Not just phone case, like wood and an iPhone, not just a Galaxy, but a case, versus 1.3 million results for external battery, which is like every, go back, it's like every battery pack. Same on Google. Wood iPhone case gets you about 26 million results. Magento Extensions, which is a very competitive marketplace, is about 455,000 results. The key for us is new designs. It's staying connected with our customers. It's keeping them updated, and it's really staying ahead. The thing I tell the people who work for me, because there's always a frustration when we see people who are either ripping us off or kind of doing the same thing, and I tell them, "I'd rather see people," I tell them, "We're on a road, and there's going to be competitors. I'd rather see them in the rearview mirror than out in front of me." So the thing we're always trying to do is make sure that we're staying out in front of people. We know there's going to be competitors, and that's, you know, one of the great things about America is the competition and the ability and the huge marketplace. But it also requires us to really stay on our toes and stay ahead. So for us, kind of over the years, what we've learned that have really worked well for us, and like you mentioned earlier, this is my fourth e-commerce company, and so this is kind of a combination of everything we've learned. And me and my brother and our team kind of came into it with some experience behind us. We always build the company from its sales. So I made an investment to start the company, to buy the machinery. Beyond that, every investment by the company comes out of its sales and comes out of its profit. So the company, the sales, our customers, their responses have to justify where we're going to grow and where we're going to go. We try to own or control as much of the process as we can. So we're kind of as vertically integrated as we can be. So we manage our Magento installations in-house. We source our wood in-house. We're doing the production. We're doing the finishing. We're doing the shipping. We're doing the customer service. We're doing all the returns. And that really lets us really control that. Roughly 80% of our business is direct through carve.com. Just about 20% of it's wholesale and in stores. And so we're able to really have a relationship with our customers. We're also able to really maximize the margin on our sales by owning and controlling that. And then underneath it all is creating a well-loved brand. So now, especially since when I started, it's incredibly easy to start an e-commerce store, and that's a great thing because it means that a lot more people can start them, and there's a lot more creativity, and there's a lot more new stuff happening. But it's also a very unique challenge because there's a lot of stuff happening, and there's a lot more people starting stores. And so you really, what we've learned over the years is we really have to focus on creating a brand that people love, creating a brand that people care about in terms of, you know, product design, how we're making it, what quality level we're requiring before we ship something out, what's happening when a customer's having an issue. And really, everything down the pipeline is making sure that we're creating something that people love. So when you have a carved case on your phone, someone asks you where you got it, we want you to have a good experience with it, and that's really valuable and really important to us. Carve.com is where we sell everything. We have a discount code right now. Imagine 2016, I'll give you 25% off at the end of the conference. And then we're very active on Instagram, Twitter, also on Snapchat, which is CarvedHQ. I put it up there. And then feel free to email me as well. That's my direct email address. So that's all I've got. I'll hand it back over to Mark.
And I would encourage everyone to write that down. If you haven't seen it yet, these are some very cool iPhone cases. I'm not an iPhone case guy, but you should check this out. It's got our favorite logo on the back, so if anyone's curious on how to get this one, definitely check out their site. It's a very, very cool, very high-quality product. So thank you, John. I love it. I'm not just saying that because you are. Next up, we've got Angela, who is the founder of Oaklandish, a really cool company based out of Oakland, who is not only a business, small business up and running, but also one that's trying to spread the local love. They're a B-rated company who are really working with the local community, not only to develop really cool products and really premium products, but do it in a way that they're going to give back to the community, specifically the local community in Oakland. So I want to welcome Angela up here today on stage to talk a little bit more about her company and some of the lessons she's learned.
Oaklandish started in 2000 as a public art project about Oakland history and civic pride. It began as a digital slideshow of 150 Oakland historical figures that we broadcast onto the sides of public buildings. There was also a wheat-based poster series of 11 different saints and sinners of Oakland. So those were the kind of guerrilla street art origins of Oaklandish. 2006/2007, we embarked on the second and what's still the current incarnation of Oaklandish, which is that of a civic pride apparel line. So we started this mobile retail, which you can see in the bottom left-hand corner. It's a 1966 Clark Cortez. There are only about 2,000 of them ever made, so it's pretty problematic when it breaks down. But that was our main source of income until we opened our first flagship store in downtown Oakland in 2011. You know, obviously, with the mobile origins of Oaklandish, scalability was a pretty big problem for us, and so we addressed that. Okay, so during this period of time, we increased the number of revenue channels to something like 14. So it's a little bit hard to tell from this slide, but we had direct brick-and-mortar sales, festival sales, wholesale, and then we also started our own screen printing business. So again, this vertical integration that John was talking about earlier. And we started also doing creative services for other companies because we had built this brand that had embarked on a rebranding of the city of Oakland. And so a lot of people came to us for that expertise. When you look at this timeline, you can see that, and we'll look a little bit more at the revenue growth later, but obviously, the launch of the Magento community site in 2010 opened up a whole new line of revenue. The flagship store is a beast downtown Oakland. You know, in the last five years since we opened, over a dozen ground-floor retail businesses have opened within just a block of us. We were really the catalyst for that. And in kind of official and unofficial surveys done of customers to downtown Oakland, asking them, you know, for weekends, Saturday and Sunday, "What brings you to downtown Oakland?" Over 60% of people on the street and people in the store said that they came downtown because they wanted to shop at Oaklandish. So there's really been this multiplier economic effect as a result of Oaklandish. And the revenue growth from 2013 till now has really been a result of going into new product categories. And that's something that was enabled by the fact that we implemented, we chose Bright Pearl as our ERP inventory management partner in mid-2013. And it was very easy for us to implement. It was days, not weeks. It's been very, very affordable to do. And what that's enabled us to do is to really tighten up the business processes and inventory planning for our core screen-printed apparel. And we, like John, have been bootstrapped, so everything's been out of cash flow. So the more that we're able to accurately predict what we need for, say, holiday, the less we have to discount in Q1. So we're able to take that money and invest that into new product categories. So we started out with screen-printed apparel. We've moved heavily into headwear, drinkware, everything from socks to magnet sets to prints about Oakland. So as we move forward, that's a real competitive advantage for us to have this infrastructure that allows us to see on a dashboard where we're spending our money, what the paths are going forward, and where we can continue to grow. So we are not doing this for the money. We're doing this for the fun stuff, which is giving back to the community of Oakland. B Corp certification, if you're not familiar with it, it's like fair trade certification, but for businesses. So you have to take an assessment, and then they ask for documentation where you show that you give back to the community, that you are environmentally conscious, there's a sustainable business model, some governance issues. We pride ourselves on this basis and community that we have. We have one and a half, maybe two people whose entire job is handling community engagement and inbound community requests. We target about 5% of top-line revenue that goes towards supporting these community programs. So all these events that you see in these pictures are free events that we put on for the community. So bottom left and one of the upper-right ones are just signings by local professional athletes in Oakland, Josh Reddick of the A's and Harrison Barnes of the Warriors. And, you know, they recognize what we're doing, and so they come in and do a free signing for mostly the kids. The photo with a bunch of people is one of our monthly First Friday events. Those, again, are free. We have a keg, sometimes multiple kegs, and it's just a free party. So that enables the people who either don't wear screen-printed apparel or who don't have the money to spend on that to really participate in the brand. We also have many, you know, different grant programs and nonprofit of the month. But the most important thing is the employees, and there was a picture of them in the previous slide. But that's them. There's about 45 of them, kind of 12 core full-time folks, median age of about 25, and almost all of whom, this was their first job out of college, or they're still in school. So we're really teaching them the skills for them to hopefully stay with us as long as we can afford them. Some of them get so good that they get hired away by Pandora and other tech companies, but I think that's still fulfilling our mission, but really creating quality inner-city jobs for young Oaklanders. So Oaklandish, I think we've managed to build a very strong brand. It's a really fierce, has a really fierce group of followers. There are, we've seen dozens and dozens of photos of people on Instagram with the Oaklandish logo tattooed on their bodies, which is a crazy and inspiring thing each time we see that. It's an inclusive brand, so even though Oakland is changing so much, it's for all of the people who were born and raised there, but it's also for people who, you know, just moved to Oakland. And our stance on that is just, as long as you're willing to invest in your community, you're not just using it as a place to live, but you really care about what's happening, then we want you to rep Oaklandish. We've had the opportunity to cross-brand with a lot of large brands, with the largest being probably Adidas. And that happened last year, and the connection was Damian Lillard, who plays for the Portland Trail Blazers, and he's an Oakland native. And along with this, we did a capsule series of seven pieces of apparel to go along with But, you know, our collaborative designs are not just for big business. They're for local nonprofits and, you know, of course, our sports teams too. So Pollinator Posse is a group that wants to make sure that bees and all the other things that, that make sure that we can still have plants have places to land every few hundred feet. Boys of Summer was an official giveaway t-shirt that we did with the A's. Port of Cat Town, that's a fundraising t-shirt. 10% of proceeds are earmarked for Cat Town Cafe, which was the first cat cafe in the country, I believe. So you go there and you make an appointment, and their mission is to get the cats adopted, but they have this café element to it. Oakland Power at Hack the Hood, its mission is to teach young black men and women coding skills so that they can be part of the tech economy. And then that's Oaklandish and Hiero, Hieroglyphics, legendary Bay Area hip-hop. This backpack, we gave away a few thousand last year. This summer, we'll be giving away 10,000 backpacks to below-the-poverty-line Oakland Unified School District students, of whom, you know, there are probably 40,000, but we just have the budget for the 10,000 this year. Warriors Ground, an official design with the Warriors. So customers aren't just who buys your product. That's why we have all of these events where people can just go and hang out. And a lot of the people who go to these events, even though there's beer, but a lot of the people who go to the events are actually under 21. And there aren't that many places for young people, especially young people of color, to congregate, and so that really builds a strong community there. There are all kinds of people who rep Oaklandish. It's not just like a skate brand or for, you know, older people, but it really brings everyone together because you can have the same design, and you see the pot-bellied 60-year-old dad wearing it, and you can see the cool 14-year-old skateboard kid, and there's a commonality that's built as a result of that. There are some people, though, that we do want to have an Oaklandish buyback program because we don't really want them to be wearing it, but you can't control that. Omni Channel, of course, you know, when we were at the farmer's market, there's only certain kinds of people who are going to go to the farmer's market to buy their t-shirts. Now with the stores and with online, that's really changed a lot and broadened our reach. And, you know, one of the weird things about online is we sell a ton of 2X, 3X, 4X online. So those people are not going to the farmer's market. But the brand is really about connection. It's about connecting with other people, and it's about connecting with your memories of your town, your new hometown, or your always hometown. So just some quick revenue stuff. We finally made the Inc. 5000 last year, so we hope to experience continued growth. But one of the takeaways from these numbers is just that we are able to expand outside of Oakland. So, you know, whether it's people who are transiting in and out of Oakland, or just people who have visited and buying something, but I think that Oakland as a brand and Oaklandish as a brand is becoming more of a national thing. But we don't have a plan of like rolling out a ton of new retail stores, so this next play for us has to be online. And we've always been terrible at marketing, at digital marketing. We've been great at grassroots marketing. So that's really the biggest challenge for us, to try to figure that out as we try to grow the online piece. And we have a great social media following, probably about 40,000 Facebook, 30-something thousand Instagram, 25,000 Twitter, and then we've got an email newsletter of another 12,000. So like really figuring out how to leverage those things for growth. So as we try to figure out the next online piece and like growing this in-real-life community and having that have an online piece to it, wish us luck.
So thank you, Angela. That was great, really inspiring, particularly some of the employment opportunities you're giving inner-city youth. That's wonderful. Onto another inspiring story. Dale Majors here, who's kind of gone first full circle, built a business and actually recently sold it, so he's going to talk a little bit about that. And Dale and his father, George, started selling on eBay back in 2004. And they started selling salvage freight and even Persian rugs, but he'll talk a little bit. I won't steal his thunder, but he'll talk a little bit about his story, which is really interesting, and how he's also kept balance in his life. I think this is an inspiring story for us that, I know myself included, that tend to work too hard and too long. And don't forget, small business owners do work hard, but he's managed to make some good balance. So without further ado, I'll introduce Dale, and he'll tell you a little bit more about his lessons.
So how many in here are retailers? Perfect, so quite a few. Does anyone remember how much they weighed when they sold their first product on the I was 100 pounds. And actually, I weighed in as a junior in high school for the wrestling team at 104 pounds, so I only had to lose a pound this year. And I'm recognizing the guys from Argentina, right? I met these guys in the elevator, and they drove me here. Very lucky. It was great. It was good to meet them. So yeah, I started, am I too loud?
No.
Okay, cool. So I started selling online in high school, and I just kind of happened upon this store. Well, my mom would buy kind of discounted groceries at this store called NPS. And, you know, growing up as one of nine kids, it's kind of what you did. And I saw a flyer for a store that, of kind of a sister store that sold industrial product. So I drove my Ford Festiva over to this industrial store by the airport, and it was amazing. Banana boxes full of random stuff, and I'm kind of a treasure hunter, and I thought it was just so much fun. And I started going to the store all the time, and I realized that the same people would go to the store as well. So I was making about $60 a week cleaning a building at that time, and I started spending money on bike parts because I always liked bikes. I built ramps as a kid, and I had a little BMX bike, and that was kind of my deal. So I would buy bike parts that looked expensive, and then I would post them on eBay, and I would just write, people would ask me questions about them, and I'd say, "I'm not sure how to figure that out. How do you?" And they, all these customers would coach me how to tell the difference between double and shifter, you know, double and triple shift levers, for example, or rear derailers. "Hey, is this RapidRiser derailleur?" "I don't know. What does that even mean?" So I really just fell into it, into selling online. So the, I did that through high school, sold on the internet, and then the first goal that I had was to save $10,000 so I could move to Portugal and be a missionary for my church for two years. And that's what I did, saved 10,000 bucks, went to Portugal, and a dream that I had before I went to Portugal was to ride from across the country. And then when I got back, I realized that it wouldn't be that much fun to ride east to west, so I rode down the Pacific coast. And so some buddies and I, we took a Greyhound bus up to Seattle. We rode up to Port Angeles, and then we rode down to Tijuana, and it was amazing. And on that trip, I listened to this book called Goals by Brian Tracy. He's like a motivational speaker. I listened to it like five times, and I was like so pumped on life. And before I did this bike trip, I was selling vitamins, expensive vitamins. And everybody that I knew was poor, well, like middle-class, and nobody could afford this stuff. So I kind of had this epiphany when I got back, that I hated selling vitamins, and I should try to figure out how to sell on the internet full-time. So I approached my dad, George. "Oh, good. This animation is..." George, oh, good, this animation is, oh wait, it's the same, okay, cool. So that's me and my dad. I approached him, and while I was in Portugal, he lost his job. And he had six kids at home making 60 grand a year, and he got a pay cut, making like 40 grand. He wasn't, he wasn't really too happy about where he was. So we both decided that, hey, let's just get together, like, we can do this. If we, if all I need to do is replace 3,500 bucks a month of pre-tax income for you, and then we can go full-time. So I knew that he had a $20,000 credit card. And, and I slept on a bunk bed in my basement with my little brother, and I didn't need to make much money. So we became partners. That was it. We said, "Great, we'll be 50/50 partners. I'll buy the stuff, you, you know, do the accounting, whatever, and we'll do this." That was in 2004. And then we, so we actually sold the business in 20, January 21st, January 1st of this year. For, we'd grown it to $10 million in revenue. So there was a big, like, gap between doing that, but, and I'll kind of talk about that. Thank you for talking. So you'll see this picture on the top left, that was my garage, and that's where I stored all my inventory. Before I went to Portugal, I had a card table where I'd, I even had a few customers come into my house. And I met one once. He said, "I bought stuff from you in your basement, on your card table." And I said, "That is so weird that that happened," but it really did. And then the picture to the bottom is our first warehouse that we found for 800 bucks a month. Kind of a turning point for me, when I realized that I was willing to give anything and everything that I had to make it successful, was my dad and I had this kind of fight at the bottom of my stairs at our house. And not like a physical fight, but just a, "Dale, you're spending way too much money, and what are we doing? And you're going to run us out, you know, you're going to run us out of business." And for me, I said, "Look, we need to grow this thing, and this is the only way that we're going to do it." So it was the classic entrepreneur versus accountant fight. I'm sure many of you have had them. And what was really cool is, you know, it was just my, my dad and I and a couple stay-at-home moms, and I had a little brother working for me too. I could very easily make a difference because it kind of clicked in my head when we were talking, and I said, "Fine, I'm just going to list everything." Because it was very simple. You buy things, you list on the internet, it sells. When I started, there wasn't even marketing involved. You just posted it on eBay and it sold. Very simple. And I committed that night to, to list everything. So I set my alarm clock for 2:00 AM and went to sleep, woke up at 2:00, listed for five hours before school, and I did that for about three months. And during that time, we grew our, our monthly revenue from about 20 grand a month to 40, $40,000 a month or so. And then one morning I woke up, it, it went from like 2:00 to 3:00 to 4:00, and people were telling me, "Dale, it's not healthy to sleep four hours. You're going to like kill yourself." And one morning, when I woke up at 4:30, I just realized that I didn't have anything to do, so I went back to sleep. But, ooh, so this falls in, I only included flattering pictures. So bike swaps and trade shows. The first bike swap I ever went to was this guy, he called me, he said, "Hey, you can go to a bike swap in Denver and help me sell stuff?" And I was trying to pose, but he put your camera down. Okay, anyway, whatever. So I went to this bike swap, and it's where a bunch of people, bike shops, consumers, everybody else brings their old bike stuff, or bike shops would bring a lot of the new stuff. And my friend told me, he said, "Dale, if you get good deals, you can bring them back to our table and sell them, and in the same day, you can make, you could make like $100 or $200." And I thought, "Well, that sounds interesting. Great, we'll do this." So my younger brother and I go to Denver with him, and within a couple hours of being at the store, at the bike swap, I realized that there was no way I was going to sell it all there, but I should buy as much of this stuff as I possibly could and bring it back to me to Utah. And that, and that's what I did. I only had like 1,000 bucks, and then I convinced this guy to take a check for $2,000. And then, but when I got back, I immediately looked up all the bike swaps. So that fall, I, you know, I flew to Chicago, and I drove to Tucson, Arizona, and I went to San Francisco, and any other swap that I could do, I would bring my parents' minivan, and then haul product back. The same friend that invited me to Chicago once, or to the first bike swap, he, he got in a car accident in Oakland, actually, Berkeley. And we were stuck in Berkeley, trying to get this, rent a U-Haul trailer and get this dude in his backyard to, to put a hitch on my parents' minivan. Then it broke like 50 miles later, and the trailer was like stranded and, you know, 50 miles closer to Utah. It was crazy, but pay it for, like, I had to kind of pay him back, like a favor, since he helped me get into business. So I did all these bike swaps for five years. We'd spend, I'd bring a fanny pack with like $10,000, $20,000 in it, and just spend it all through the Saturday, and then get it all back through a, on my, in my minivan, or I later got more organized and would call a, a trucking company and get, have them give me the last 10 feet of trucking space. Trade shows. The first inner bike that I ever went to, I would, my buddy, the same guy, as you, so this isn't a lesson on strategy. You will learn nothing about strategy from here. But the first trade show, I would get pins and posters of Lance Armstrong, and then bring them back and sell them on eBay for like 20 bucks a piece. So, and then I kept going, and people would tell me why they wouldn't sell to me, and, and I would kind of take note and try to fix things on the home front, get a bike shop, you know, have a legitimate website. I think we got, we got onto Magento Community actually in 2011, and before, we, we started selling on our own website in about 2008, so it took a while before we started doing that. Anyway, so bike swaps, trade shows, all the getting product thing. Okay, so I call this the E-myth indoctrination. I'm going to look at my time, too. Where are we at? Eight minutes, hmm, we good? They gave me the nod. Okay. All right, so one of the things that helped me the most, I think, was I, I finished most of my school. I went, I have like one year left. We were just talking about how I should go back. But I listened to a lot of books. And what helped me a lot was stepping away completely out of my business and going on these trips so I could kind of get a fresh perspective. So two years after I rode down the coast, the, the, from Canada to Mexico, these same friends, they said, "Hey, look, if we can, then we should go to Europe and ride for a couple months, if we're not like married and, and have, have good jobs, if we don't have good jobs or anything else." So that's what we decided. So we kind of regrouped a couple months before this trip and said, "Hey, we can all still leave." So we flew to Amsterdam, and then we rode to, for 3,500 miles or so down to Lisbon, Portugal. And on that trip, I listened to a lot of these books and really thought about where I wanted to take my business. And so that's just kind of a tip, something where whenever I've left and been able to look back on my business, I've always seen it with a lot more clarity, for whatever it's worth. The, you know, the E-myth, the E-myth is a, is a book that talks about creating a system and for your business where it runs without you. And I wanted to go on bike trips a lot, so I knew that I couldn't create a business that needed me. So I was always focused on creating a business that would run and, and make me money without me being present. Okay, this is another flattering picture. So one thing that I learned, and I actually, I, I hired and fired an older brother of mine because I was, because I kind of suffered from this only-one-who-cares syndrome. Created a rift in my family for like four years, was not a good thing. But I would think, and I know that, have you ever, so the only-one-who-cares, have you ever said to yourself, "Nobody cares about the business as much as me"? Or, "Man, these people just don't take ownership over this or that." And is, who's worked in a culture of low trust, where the boss thinks that he's putting more, more energy into it than anybody else? Two people, three? Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Okay, 11 in the back, thank you. So anyways, I had a place where I think there was relatively low trust, and I felt that I was, you know, quite the contributor. And I would just say, question yourself, and question how much you care about your employees, question how much you even let them on the front lines with you. And if you can ask yourself that honestly, just think about it, it's going to be way better, you're going to have a much better, be a better place to work, if you can trust people and let them be on the front lines battling with you, alongside you as an equal. Somebody could have told me this three years ago, I wouldn't have believed them because I was always doing awesome. Right? But I've had a boss for the last three months, so I know a little bit more now. Okay. Key wins for me. Stepping away to gain clarity, we already talked about that. Getting the right people on the bus. Does anyone out there have an employee now that if you could go back in time to when you hired them, you would strongly advise yourself to not hire them? So if you do, and you're, they're still working for you, that's what I use zero-based thinking for, knowing what I now know about the situation, would I do it over again? And people are, we're all confusing creatures, so it's never, you know, a total yes or no answer, but sometimes it is. And I try to make sure that the people that I have on the, on, on the team, I really trust, because I don't want them to live in a low-trust environment, where I'm always second-guessing them, where I'm all, where they're always going to expect, "Oh, what did I do wrong this time?" Because you're never, you're never going to win, and it's hard to, it's hard to get out of the box with that. Okay. Criticize the, what people are doing, not how they're doing it. My culture five years ago was, I was kind of a labeled micromanager, which was really hard label to break out of. So anytime you'd even ask, though, like, "Hey, how did this go last week?", people would think, "How dare you ask me about details of my job?" You know? So over several years, we created a much more high-accountability culture with more trust. We used Salesforce.com to create a, a weekly kind of home to keep all of our metrics, and that actually helped a lot. In Salesforce, you can create custom objects and, you know, throw the 50, 100 fields that you want to track those every week, so we kind of kept a good weekly dashboard, and that helped our business quite a bit. And kind of a mantra for me was, since I didn't want to be involved in the business, it was all about delegating and training, and just always delegate and train, and teach the managers to delegate and train, and don't do anything that you can delegate and train away. All right, realigning priorities. So this was one of the coolest trips that I've been on thus far, because I could take my whole family. My wife and I, we took our three kids to, we flew over to, over to France, and we rode along the Loire River. About 1,300 miles, rode across France, through Germany, along the Danube a little bit. I had a one, three, and five-year-old at the time, and just riding every day. We took about 10 weeks, and we just rode our bikes all the time. It was amazing. And I actually hired an interim CEO when I left and said, "You're better than I am", which he really was. "Can you please like mentor and train my guys and figure out what's, what, you know, can be fixed in my company?" And I just gave him the kind of key, gave him the keys to do whatever, and I knew that my guys wouldn't really wreck things too much. So we, we left, and as I was riding a few weeks into it, I realized that I didn't really like my life that much, and I, I could choose to do whatever I wanted to do, but my day-to-day was waking up at 5:00, 5:30, checking my email immediately, and then getting sucked into work stuff until 6:00 PM, and then going home. And who would ever choose to do that if they had a choice? Right? And I thought it was kind of fun, but it definitely didn't align with what my goals were. So I got really serious about, well, what do I want my life to look like? And if I could structure it, how, you know, differently, what would I do? And the, the answer for me was waking up, you know, and from 5:00 to 8:00, not doing anything that had to do with work, reading and learning and, and doing other things, exercising. And then I also, I stopped going into the office Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And that made my Tuesdays and Thursdays much more structured. Every 30 minutes, I was bam, 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 bam. Anytime somebody would schedule a meeting with me, it was fitting into that Tuesday, Thursday schedule. So for me, until, you know, and, and when I, when I was approached to sell my business, the first lunch, I said, "Look, I don't want a boss. I'm going to work when I, I'm going to work and continue my same schedule, and I go on bike trips every summer." And they were very supportive of that. But it's because I became really clear on what I wanted. So I'd say, get clear on what your plan is, and then when you have that, the world has a very kind of defined definition of what winning is, but it may not be your definition of winning. So identify what your definition of winning is, and then win, and it doesn't matter what other people think. Thank you.
All right, next up is Drew Pearson. He's a leader entrepreneur and strategic marketing director with successful experience starting and running a venture-backed company, so he'll talk a little bit about that today. He's also got experience developing digital capabilities and leading teams, driving both small, mid-size, and Fortune 500 companies. So his company is Look, and he's out there to revolutionize how men buy clothes, so everyone listen up. I'm sure there's a few of us here in the audience that would like to do that better and look better. So without further ado, here's Drew.
Thank you. All right, so I know we're tight on timing, and I think you guys were supposed to be out a couple minutes ago, so I'm going to roll through this. I'm, I'll stay around. I'm up front here. If anybody has any questions, feel free to just jump up and ask me anything. And, and I want to share basically our experience, my experience, in the startup space, and hopefully it's helpful for any of you who are also either in a startup or looking to start a business. So I'm Drew Pearson, CEO and co-founder of Look. We have created the most confident and convenient way for men to refresh their wardrobe. So about two and a half years ago, my business partner and I sat down over coffee, and we said, you know, menswear needs a shakeup. It needs a major disruptor. And at the time, the current competitors in the space were companies like Trunk Club, Bombfell, who all required a personal stylist in order to fulfill an order. In other words, they would have a young person listen to you, actually not really listen to you. What they were doing is walking up and down warehouses full of inventory and filling boxes based on what they had bought already. And so we said, something had to change with that model. There's got to be a model that we can build in a, in a better production cycle that gives customers what they want and uses technology to drive that. So we built, we knew that retail, in a traditional sense, was broken, and the, still the core principle is guys want to look good, but they hate shopping. They don't want to sweat it out, and a lot of times in our instance, they also don't want to sift through 60 pages of e-commerce with some of the classic retailers. So we built a company that delivers premium menswear, delivered either monthly or on-demand or both. And we removed the hassle of stylists, so you don't have to talk to somebody. We've built an algorithm, a decisioning engine, that allows us to curate product and content based on what our users, how our users behave and what they tell us. And all this is centered around or, or supported by an ecosystem of personalized content. So our algorithm, as it learns, we're able to plan and build content that's relevant and that represents the voice of 25 to 40-year-old men. So I broke this into three stages. There's actually kind of three stages of, of learnings for us, and some of this seems really simple, and, and actually, for us, it's sometimes the, the simple things that get forgotten. And so I wanted to make sure to walk through some of that at a pre-stage, launch stage, and a, and a post-launch standpoint. So first, in the early stage, the most important thing, and this always goes without being said, but it's really easy to forget because you can get frustrated in a startup, is you have to love what you do. There's a lot of days where you look and you say, "Is this really the right thing to do?" You put a lot on the line, and these guys all know, within a startup business is, especially when you have a family, you put everything on the line. A lot of times, you risk your savings, everything you got. And when you're doing that, you have to make sure you're having fun and you're loving what you're doing, because when it gets hard, that's what makes you pull through in the end. We learned that first isn't always the best. We had one competitor that actually, can you guys hear me back there? Perfect. So we had one competitor that entered the marketplace when we were in planning phase, when we were getting ready to launch. And, and so for us, it was great because we were able to evaluate and analyze the things that they were doing well and the things that they were not doing so well. and the things that they were not doing so well and make those improvements on, on our end. We also became masters. We were willing to learn not only from our space, which our space is a very young, immature industry. And so there were learnings that we could pull from retail, from e-commerce that would apply directly to our business model. And we always wanted to evolve our way of thinking because at the end of the day, it's, menswear is about shopping, creating a great experience for customers that they want to keep coming back. Align yourself with smart people. It's not just with smart people, but it's actually, um, to what Dale said, it's people that you trust. You want to align yourself with people that, um, you want to be around day in and day out, that you trust, have your best interest in mind. Um, and then have those difficult discussions, um, upfront and early on. Because, uh, when you have success or failures, it's always, always easy handle it upfront than to wait until everything either blows up or goes really well. Um, and finally, uh, test, learn and iterate. You know, it's funny, we were, my partner and I were looking at, um, old whiteboard scratches of, of when we first started thinking through this model. Uh, because we actually had to make two things work. We had to make the logistics of the supply chain work. And we had to make sure that it made sense from a customer standpoint in terms of investing in a monthly or an on-demand purchasing pattern. And so, um, we went through so many iterations of that to make that work. And just when we thought we were coming onto something where it was like, yeah, I think we have this, we would scrap it, throw it and start over. And, um, it was really about two years we did that. For the first year and a half, uh, we didn't quit our day jobs. And, and it seems like a really big, um, topic of debate is when to quit your day jobs? And I, I've already had two discussions today of people asking me that. But it's really, there's no answer for it. The answer is when your gut tells you, you gotta go for it. So then we have launch stage. So we wanted to make sure that we were always prepared for any type of opportunity or any type, type of threat that we had in the industry. So, um, we built a, uh, a, a style of planning that was very agile. So it allowed us to respond to the market as quick as we can. Because in our space, you can take, uh, advantage of opportunities, say in, in social or with press. For instance, we had, uh, a feature this morning on TechCrunch that allowed us to really respond quickly. And, um, and, and usually with startups, especially in a space innovative as subscription, you don't have as much time to, to plan that out. So, um, next, making sense of, uh, early insights. So we had a hypothesis of who our customer was and we weren't really exactly sure if that was gonna resonate, um, our brand, our site, our experience. And we found out really quickly that, um, in our model, we actually have, it's called the 80%. So 10% of people are, are higher fashion and 10% are people that would shop at Fleet Farm. And so we're really hitting, um, right in that middle spot. And we found that our customers were really hitting on the 10 or 12 cities that we thought they would in the 25 to 40-year-old category. Um, and, and making a lot of the behave, behavioral, um, signs that we actually thought they would, which is, um, a good thing for us. So critics and opinions. I once heard that opinions are like assholes and everybody has one. Uh, and it's funny, when you launch, when you ask for opinions pre-launch, no one really gives you as much time and attention. But once you launch, everybody has an opinion. And so, um, you know, for us, it was really about those trusted folks that I was talking about. Um, and really finding people that could give us, uh, critiquing and, and, and improvement that could help our, our business. Year one expectations, really quick, um, just bottom line, it's about being agile, being able to, um, being able to move, move with your business and understand that your customers shift, that trends shift. Uh, but you gotta stay true to who you are, but also understand that there are opportunities to, um, and do a better job of marketing. And finally, I wanted to touch just a little bit on the new investor. So this is, uh, not my first startup. I've had a couple startups and my first startup, uh, money was a lot easier to raise. Uh, it was about 10 years ago. And we've, uh, it was a crazy idea. I started a record label. And, uh, we sold music with Sony Records and, um, I thought there was no way we were ever gonna raise money. And we raised money in 40 days and, and a lot of money. And, um, and so when we started this business, I had that same expectation at first. And, um, quickly got put back into my seat. And, you know, and really the new investor, and I'm sure a lot of you are probably, if you have a startup, you're going through this if you're raising capital, is everybody's an investor. You know, you see it on LinkedIn, everybody says they're an investor. Uh, so qualifying is a lot, are a lot more challenging now than it was 10 years ago. Um, and finding the right people and aligning with the right people who would fund your type of project. And it's more important so you're not wasting your time, too. All right. So finally, uh, post-stage. So this is what, what we learned most of all is that it's critical for us to have an intimate relationship with our customer. So, you know, in a world of big data, we knew that we had to find a way that we could enable quick decisioning. And mostly because we only have a staff of six people. So we just didn't have the, the manpower to crunch and consolidate large volumes of data and, and really make sense of it. And so what we wanted to do is, is just really understand our customer. And then with inclusion and exclusion, uh, when we first got into this, we saw a lot of companies saying, whatever it is, we'll take you, really. Um, and we found that to be kind of counterproductive to what we were doing in that it was okay for us to be exclusive, to say, if you don't fit in our 25 to 40-year-old audience and you don't, um, show these types of behaviors and you're not this type of customer, this service might not be for you. And so, um, it was okay for that than trying to chase the tail ends on both sides and hope that we could get a few more customers because it was breaking the core experience for our core customer. So insights, uh, correlation fusion. So as we get, as we get smarter on how we market our business, um, it becomes more and more important for us to understand what types of data we correlate and what types of data we fuse together, um, to make important decisions for our business. So for, for instance, so we have, um, four core personas that, um, all of our customers fit in. But within those core personas, we have about 16 unique columns that break into another four, um, four pieces from there. And so, um, we need to understand how we're putting, uh, data together so that we can do two things. We can predict and, and, and use intuitiveness with content and with product as well. So supply chain and, and marketing, really. And, and finally, the, the, the most important thing, uh, for us in the subscription space is, you know, like I said, we, we're not the only players in this space. Uh, we actually have one true competitor in, uh, peer subscription. However, that being said, we're the only person in this space that's investing in a comprehensive algorithm and decisioning engine. And we're building something that is making companies like Amazon pick up the phone and call us. And so we are, you know, for us, that's our winning point is that if any one of you signs up for our subscription service and, and, and you're a member, we want to give you the best experience from content and from a product standpoint so that you don't have to worry about that. You can live your life and put this on autopilot. All right. So turning points, um, real quickly, we had a handful of turning points. Securing advisors. We knew right away when we started selling this concept to, uh, people to join our team. Um, the excitement we got was awesome. We got, it, it made us excited that people were, were willing to invest their time and money into, into our business. Seed capital. So we raised, uh, we'll call, we call it kind of a, um, friends and family round, but we raised capital. There was, um, expense in building the technology and as well as the marketing systems and tools. Reaching, uh, reaching MVPs. So for us, it was a mad dash from the day that we had that first conversation, um, to getting, uh, this platform up and running was just a mad dash. And even that, um, and I'll talk about in a sec, we had just awesome development partners. I mean, they pulled this off in like 100 days. We shot for 90, we ended up going out like 10 days over, but it was just incredible. And, and I'll talk about the partner in a minute. But, uh, we, so we, the best part was obviously, I think for every business is our first customers. We got our first customers in, we were able to, we were able to learn from them. Uh, we actually had real-time conversations. So we would reach out via social, uh, just get early opinions, early insights from our, from our customers. Excitement, so as soon as we started to get some press, we actually started to see a lot of excitement from people that not only were in the apparel side, but actually people, you know, that were in electronics, that were in, um, other spaces that wanted to touch on that core 25 to 40-year-old audience. Uh, and then finally, recognition. We've been, uh, we've gained a pretty steady stream of, of press, which has been, uh, really awesome for us. A lot of times when you're in a startup, you don't know if it's really resonating, not just with customers, but in the space. And, and sometimes the, uh, the press is what, what, you know, motivates you to, to stay excited about it. So, um, so again, so all of this, we were extremely fortunate to find partners. A company called Echidna, um, with offices based in Minneapolis. They fully, uh, invested in our success. And so, um, from day one, they were fully, um, onboard, rolled their sleeves up. You know, I've, I've, I'm, I'm a classically trained marketer. Um, I've spent a lot of time in digital. And, uh, it's not very common these days with developers to, um, find somebody, invest so much into a business. And I'm speaking on experience of working with a lot of developers. And we were, it was, it was incredible for us. Uh, we built this with Magento at the core. Um, and then we built an ecosystem of tools and, and, um, systems around that to support all of our marketing automation. And this entire company, the, the beauty of it that we've heard a lot from, um, some of these industry leaders is, um, a lot of companies build technology from a technologist's standpoint. We built our technology and aligned our systems and tools from a marketer's standpoint because it had to make sense first for our customer and not for technology bells and whistles. So finally, what would we do differently? So I like to say, those who drive through the rearview fail to see the road ahead. And really for us, I, I don't, I don't think I could say there's anything we change. Um, we've, we've learned a whole ton and we continue to evolve every single day. Um, we, we always expect, we're ready for curves in the road, for hiccups, for bumps. We, especially with technology, always find that just, it goes without being said. Um, we're ready, we're agile, we're, we're ready to, um, to respond quickly to these challenges that arise. Um, and we make sure that we always focus on our one, two and three-year plan. Um, because we know if we can ride out some of the waves, that, um, ultimately we get to our goal. And, and finally, you know, we, we really use our advisors and the people that we trust. So, um, we lean a lot on our advisors to give us insights into the industry to make sure that we're, um, crafting our business model so that it fits not only current state or present state, but future state. Thank you.